Call to order, the regular city commission meeting. For 11/21/2023, let records show that all commissioners are present. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberated and just as one.
Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight's meeting. First item up is the order of business. Mr. Dossinger, are there any changes to the order of business?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. There is no change to the order of business.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any discussion on the order of business? Now I'd look for a motion on the order of business as presented.
And move to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
The second. Any further discussion on the order of business? Hearing none, all in favor of the order of business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any items on the consent agenda that you wish to discuss? Seeing there's no discussion on the consent agenda, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Otterman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll move right into administration and finance. First item up on administration and finance this evening is we have a board of adjustment appointment. Mr. Troy Bush, and this will be presented by City Administrator Dossinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. Larry Barr is a dedicated member of the board, is stepping down, and we have a promising candidate, Mr. Troy Bush, who we believe is well suited to fill this important role. City staff recommends to the city commission to consider Troy Bush as a replacement for Larry Barris on the board of adjustment. His skills, experience, and commitment make him a valuable asset, and I am confident that he will contribute significantly to the continued success of the board and, by extension, our city. City staff is looking for approval of this appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions for Mr. Dossinger on this appointment to the board of adjustment? There's no discussion about Mr. Bush. I would look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have motion to approve the appointment of Troy Bush to the board of adjustment by Dr. Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Otterman. Any further discussion on the appointment? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item up is our 2024 tobacco license renewals, and this will be handled again by City Administrator Dossinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. City staff is recommending approval of the 2024 tobacco license renewals. There's a total of 47 and encompass all of the current tobacco license holders, except Black Market Vape located at 456 15th Street West, Suite C. We have been in contact with Black Market Vape and expect their renewal application in near future. Upon receiving that application, it will be brought forth to the commission for consideration of approval. A list of the renewals is in your packet. City staff is looking for approval of these renewals.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions for Mr. Dossinger or staff on the tobacco license renewals?
Mr. President.
Mr. Otterman?
Is your effective January 1 through December 31?
That is correct.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Dossinger or city staff? Now I look for a motion on this tobacco license renewals.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion on the tobacco license renewals? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll move into the 2024 liquor license renewals. Mr. Dossinger?
Thank you again, Mr. President. As we approach the end of the calendar year, it's imperative to address the matter of liquor license renewals for the year 2024. The majority of establishments have diligently submitted their renewal applications for the upcoming year. Please find attached in your packet a list of these establishments. Three establishments have decided not to seek renewal for the year of 2024. These establishments include Country Kitchen, Dakota Diner, Home State Lounge, and Operations. City staff has completed the background checks and reviewed the applications. City staff recommends approval of the applications we have received.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions for Mr. Dossinger for the liquor license renewals? Do we have a count on the total amount of liquor licenses? Do we know? I'm sure that's in the 40s also.
All of them?
Yeah. Okay, that's just... It doesn't really matter, so. It has been brought to my attention that I am on one of the... I don't think I'm supposed to be on one of the license renewals.
Forty-six.
What's that?
Forty-six, I just quick counted them. That's including final, final.
Okay. So. I'd have to have city staff look into that, why my name popping on one of these liquor licenses, so. If it is the case, then I'm not getting my cut.
Stack in the deck.
But, so, any further discussion? I'd look for a motion on the liquor license renewals.
I'd move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll move right into our monthly financial report, and this will be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
President Decker, we should have the 2024 Legacy Square concession first?
Oh. Hmm, and that... That's not on mine, so, okay. We'll go into Legacy Square concession license discussion. Mr. Dossinger?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you may recall, the Legacy Square concession license auction for 2023 year had a minimum bid of $10,000, and the awarded bidder was required to pay 20% of the gross sales to the city for the duration of the license. In 2024, we are proposing some adjustments to the terms in an effort to align with current circumstances and ensure the continued success of our local businesses. For the upcoming year, we are suggesting a reduced minimum bid of $3,000. This figure reflects the cost of renewing a Class A liquor license, making it more accessible for potential bidders. Interested parties would submit to the city a sealed bid for the license. Opening of sealed bids shall be held at the time and date set by the city. In the event of a bid amount being tied, those parties shall have the opportunity to improve their written bid by an auction process. Additionally, we are recommending a decrease in the percentage of gross sales that the awarded bidder will be required to pay, down to 10%. We believe that these adjustments will not only encourage more participation in the bidding process, but also provide our local businesses with a more favorable economic environment. In an effort to enhance the overall experience and safety of events at Legacy Square, we are maintaining a requirement for wristbands for altenes who are at least 21 years of age and want to purchase alcoholic beverages. These wristbands will be priced at $2 each, with the proceeds contributing to the maintenance and improvements of Legacy Square facilities. Just kind of a summary of 2023, as you can see, the bid amount was $10,000. 20% of the gross sales amounted to $4,768.29. Vendor fees collected equaled $4,500. Wristband sales equaled $4,753. Keep in mind that we did switch mid-year with the wristband sales from $5 to $2, for a total of $24,021.29. In summary, the proposed changes for the 2024 Legacy Square liquor license include a reduced minimum bid of $3,000, a 10% gross sales requirement for the awarded bidder, and $2 wristbands for event attendees. These adjustments seem to strike a balance between fostering economic growth and ensuring the responsible management of events at Legacy Square. City staff is recommending approval of these changes.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions for Mr. Dossinger or city staff on the Legacy Square concession license?
Mr. President, I'd also like to add that we do have an informational form for liquor license holders that are eligible to bid on the license, and that is scheduled for November 28 at 4:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Any other questions, comments? I just renewed my... So it is on here now. So this is basically a report, right? So we don't need to vote on anything for...
We are looking at approval of these changes.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on the changes made to the Legacy Square concession license? Now I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Now we'll go on to the monthly financial. All right.
Thank you, President Decker and commissioners. This is... Would be the October financial report that I will be giving. So our treasurer's report, our general cash total is still staying around the same amount, around $63 million. And then our interest rate is at 3.30. It was 3.25 before, so it's up to 3.30%. So getting into our investments, still exactly the same because we've made all the payments that we need to for our investments, for our pensions and our OPEB, so around $33 million is what we have investments. Now to our 1% sales tax. You can see that we're down by $237,871 from '22, and so that makes it about 35% lower and about 14.3% lower than... For 2021, for our 1%. And then for our viewers, the half percent sales tax is broke down between the 1 and the half, and it's the same percentage down by $118,936 for this month.
Lynda, do you have any... That's a big drop.
It is a big drop, but I think it's because the fact that when I called in, they just said that sales were down and the... Oh, what do you call them? The auto and stuff like that didn't have all theirs in. They have like a 10-day leeway, and they didn't have theirs in, and that's why we saw a higher one last month than we did this month and stuff. So hopefully we'll go back up for November and December.
I'm gonna think auto would be a lot in with our regular sales tax.
It's the... With the auto manufacturing, so the sales with autos and big appliances, tractors, things like that. That's the only thing she could tell me, you know, because they don't get specific. But she said in the category of.
Yeah, but we don't get paid on that, though.
Yeah, the only thing I could...
On some of it.
Yeah, parts and stuff.
Parts and things like that, yes.
Yeah, but the actual car sales, just for the general public's knowledge, the city receives nothing on a car sale.
Or big equipment.
Or big equipment, yeah.
We don't. So for overall, seven years, same month, on that, with the sales tax combined, the 1.5%, we are up by $615,000 or 6.83%. So we are still above what we've been in the last seven years, same month.
October, November tend to track lower, but that's a steep decline.
Yeah, but September was way up there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but you said we're up $615,000 total?
Yes, $615,000 for same year, or same month for seven years. Okay, with the hospitality tax breakdown, we are 14,750 lower than '22 or 13.4%. And then we're approximately about 5% higher than '21, so it's right smack in the middle. And then with the seven-year, same month, in '23, we are approximately $75,320 higher yet in hospitality tax. With our occupancy, this is one that passed through, but to give you totals, we're $20,861 or 34% lower than in October of '22, so we're way down there by the '21. And then with the seven-year, it's trending $37,374 over 2022. So overall, they're still trending higher. Oil impact, you can tell by the green line, we're just about where we were in '22, so but in October, we came in $11,088 higher than '22, same month. And then overall, we are still lower on a seven-year period. We have a deficit of $1,224,000 or 8.45% lower than '22. So oil's down. With our general fund and revenues and expenses, when you... For the month of October, it should be about 83% is your benchmark, so you can tell that in for our revenues, we're a little higher. And then in our general fund expenses, we're running lower, and which is where you want it. Utility and enterprise funds, they're running right where it should be for the benchmark in October. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson or staff on the monthly financial report? There are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
I'd move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion on the monthly financial report? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll move into an abatement hearing, and this is for the years 2021 and 2022. This is for the Grand Dakota Lodge, and this will be presented by City Assessor Hirschfeld. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, commissioners. We've got the Grand Dakota Lodge and Raven Ridge Apartments here before us this evening, starting with the Grand Dakota Lodge. The applicant has filed for the years '21, 2021, and 2022. The value for both of those years that was assessed was $4,751,000. The applicant is seeking a value of $2,860,000. Want to remind the commission that in 2019, there was a commercial revaluation completed by Vanguard Appraisals, assisting us with the market revaluation, help us catch up a little bit, and the... Was a good decrease given to this property between 2018 and 2019 from $11,166,700. That was dropped 70% to structure to $4,751,000 in '19, which was also the value for '20 and '21. And we believe that value to be... Have been accurate at that time, and we'll stand for any questions or allow Mr. Block, who's representing the applicants, to give his spiel.
Is he... Is he here?
Mr. Block, are you here?
Yeah, I'm here. Can anyone hear me?
Yes, we hear you just fine.
Yes?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Yes, I'm representing the property owners for the abatement hearing, so I'll just kind of give a short, quick background on our case and then let him file this there. So the property is a 192-room hotel built in 1980, located at 532 15th Street West on personal, 1015010200. Like Joe said, the assessment is at $4,751,000 in 2021, and then $4,733,000 in 2022. So this property was purchased in an auction sale by the Merlin Hotel Group for $2,860,000, or approximately $15,000 per room on July 30, 2021. This $2.86 million sale price does not include deductions for intangible value and personal property, which is typical for hotels to get through that real estate value. In addition, we completed an income sales approach on the subject, which you should see in the submission. Our market income analysis, which utilizes the average occupancy and average daily rate of the subject's competitive set, indicates a value of $3,900,000, so kind of that midpoint in between the auction sale price and what it's currently assessed at. According to the online real estate database, there was four comparable hotels in Dickinson that have sold since 2019. The average of these sales came out to approximately $16,000 per room, and then $13,000 per room after deducting proportional property and intangible value. So that's about in line with what this property actually sold at at the... At the auction sale. So there's those statements that our requested value was the $2.86 million sale price. We're actually requesting $3.9 million, so kind of in between, adjusting for any possible discount that could have been given through that auction. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for either Mr. Hirschfeld or...
I didn't catch the number that the property was purchased for. Could you share that with... Or show me, I'm gonna tell me on the document where I'd find it.
2.8.
Yeah, 2.86 million.
Thank you.
And the requested valuation is 3.9?
No, they're requesting 2.860,000. We have a value on it of $4,751,000.
Right, just to jump in on that, I know the committee is allowed to give a value in between the assessment and what's on the abatement application form. For that $2.86 million of the portfolio, this client signed up at my group due to the sale, kind of late in the abatement process. After our calculation, we're actually requesting a value of $3.9 million. Thanks.
Yeah. So they want... My understanding is 3.9, Mr. Hirschfeld?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, it looks like they're amending what they put on their application from $2,860,000 to $3,900,000.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, I'm looking at the application for abatement, and it says 2.8.
Correct.
So. How do you feel about that, Joe?
Well, it's nice to see they closed that gap a little bit. I didn't think that was a market value sale they had. But again, the property, it was under distress when it sold, wasn't a market value. Regarding the forced sales that he used, yeah, those numbers are accurate, but I wanted to point out that the relax in was raised after the sale, so if you add the cost of construction in, it increases that sale price per room above the $7,000 figure that he has there, and then you're... All you have is the vacant land. My opinion, the Grand Dakota Lodge is nicer than all four of these hotels were. In addition, they've got conference area and a restaurant that, you know, add area to the building that's outside of what the rooms are, so, you know, I think the value of the Grand Dakota should be higher than what all of these four would indicate, which puts us right where we've got it.
So, Mr. Block, like, the... What's the price per room at the valuation that you are requesting?
So, so the assessment per room right now is at about $25,000. We're requesting a value of $20,000 per room. The sales that we're seeing in the market are $15,000 per room. Joe is correct that this... The subject property does have additional restaurants area that some of the sales do not have, but after subtracting for tangible value and personal property, comparable sales in the market are coming in at $13,000 per room. That's why we're requesting $20,000 per room, which we see is very reasonable, given the auction sale of this property for a far lower value as well as sold in the market.
And we would be able to consider both years... They're asking for two years, right? We can consider both on with one motion. Valuation, or do we have to... I guess I'll ask legal. Do we need to have separate motions for separate years?
Nice to have the turn on mic. I'm supposed to be safe, I probably would, yes.
Okay.
I mean, I would just say that I... I think this is a fair request with the sale that we have, the sale data that we have. They went up almost 1.1 million from their original request of 2.8, or of the sale price of 2.8. I don't know what the market really is here. I mean, we can go off of what Mr. Block shared there in terms of that valuation being significantly higher than what we're seeing in the market nationwide right now. Do we have any idea in terms of our local market or statewide market, Mr. Hirschfeld?
Mr. President, Commissioner Otterman, not a lot of local market activity right now, but we want to remember we're looking backwards to '21 and '22, so what's selling now isn't relevant beyond the fact that Vanguard's proposed value for this property that will be presented here later in the year, early next year, has to increase it to 4.8 million, so we're just a shade under now what they're saying it should be valued at next year. So, and then when we looked at the slides that Mrs. Carlson gave, you know, we're showing increased occupancy tax, it means they're making more money, the property should be worth a little more. And you weigh that against what interest rates are doing, and, you know, there's still a lot of uncertainty out there, but I'm comfortable with where they're at, but, you know, not a big change to what they're requesting either.
I mean, yeah, interest rates in '21 and '22 were 4% on commercial loans, now they're seven and a half.
Right, but in '21 and '22...
They were four.
They were four, so.
Well, we'll start with 2021, commissioners. If you look at the sheet with your options that are presented, you have three options. You can make no change to the $4,751,000 for 2020. We do have them on this one as... But we're gonna do them separately. We'll change to the owner's request, which is 2.8 on the sheet we have, but he just said... Mr. Block, what was it, 3.9? Is it even 3.9, Mr. Block?
3.9, no.
Even 3.9?
3.9, no.
Okay. 3 million 900,000 is what... Well, that's their request, or we can change to another value. That's our third option, commissioners.
Mr. Hirschfeld, are we still applying any obsolescence or to the hotel market like we have in the past? I mean, didn't we reduce the hotel market not a few years ago, like all the hotels?
Yes, that's on that memo I gave you, we're showing that 70% obsolescence to that structure value from 2018, so that's where we get the decrease from 11 million down to the 4.7. And we still have that obsolescence on, and the... I think we're gonna be pretty close to that same amount that's gonna be requested to be left on with the new valuation for next year.
That's what my question, I guess, was, is do you see any change in that for next year?
Not significant. I mean, we're looking at a little bit of an increase, but not significant.
Commission... Commission, what is your, um, preference on this, Commissioners?
I mean, I understand that when it's sold, the property was under duress, but I, I mean, we're looking at a valuation that's almost, you know, two million higher than what it sold for in twenty twenty-one. And, uh, I guess I, I, I really struggle with that, because if, if it was val- I mean, it was under duress and it was in like an auction st- style sale, but if the, the market dictated, y- y- you would, you would have seen greater value in that sale. A- and so I just, I have a hard time seeing two million additional dollars added to that valuation. And I can understand why the property owner would feel the same way. Because the sale is, a sale is a sale, and then, Mr. Hirschfeld, I know that you're working off of Vanguard's numbers here, um, but, uh, um, I, I'm just, yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm struggling with that.
Mr. President, if you allow me, Mr. Oderman, my, my response to that would be, our valuation would be for a property that's got adequate management and, you know, making, uh, what would be considered median income, you know, for, for its property type. And in that instance, it, it wasn't, you got a property that's not being managed well, uh, with the, uh, conference space it has, you know, it's, it doesn't have the, those leases out, and so it's not able to generate that income, so it's gonna sell for less.
That's a good point, that's, that's a valid, um, consideration.
Again, we have three options, four point seven million, three point nine million, or some other proposed dollar amount by the city commission. First consideration is twenty twenty-one. It seems, it, it seems to me, um, just to move this, this discussion on that, um, the, the ask of three point nine million is not harshly opposed by the city assessing.
It, it's a lot better than where they started, that's for sure.
I'd move to approve the twenty twenty-one valuation of three point nine million.
Motion to approve a three point nine million dollar valuation by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Under consideration is twenty twenty-two. They're asking the same amount, amount, three point nine million dollars. Again, city staff has, uh, our city assessing department has it at four point seven million, and we have the third option of, um, setting a price other than the, the one requested or what city staff has.
I would, I would make an identical, identical motion for twenty twenty-two's value, valuation.
So I would, uh, twenty twenty-two, a motion for twenty twenty-two to be at three point nine million dollars for the Grand Dakota by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Uh, it is five o'clock, so we will move into the time. We'll just have you, have you take a little seat. There, Mr. Hirschfeld?
Very good, thank you, Mr. President.
Our first item on the public hearing, public comments item, at five o'clock this evening, we have a readiness center rezone, and this will be presented by City Planner Gilbert. Welcome.
Thank you, President Decker, and good evening, Commissioners. I am City Planner Matthew Galabear. The application before you is for the rezone of the property, uh, as described. Usually that will be described before I come up here, which is, let's see, Lot One, Block One, Energy Center Third Edition. From industrial, general industrial to public. The property is owned by the City of Dickinson, and the new North Dakota National Guard Readiness Center is currently being constructed on the property. Additionally, a public safety training facility is anticipated to be constructed on the west portion of the property. Staff finds that both proposed government facilities would be best suited within the public zoning district in order to be relieved of the general industrial zoning standards. Uh, this request has gained preliminary approval at Planning and Zoning Commission on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, during which staff reported that following, uh, review of the surrounding general industrial zoned area. Approval of the rezone is unlikely to result in any adverse impact on future infill opportunities. Uh, and an additional petition for an amendment to the future land use map should be considered concurrently, as the future land use map must reflect civic slash public in order for this rezone petition, petition to comply with the comprehensive plan. As of the time of this report, staff has received no public comment. Staff recommends approval to rezone the subject property from general industrial to public, subject to approval of the concurrent application for a future land use map amendment of the same property.
Thank you, Mr. Galbert. Any questions? This is ordinance seventeen eighty-eight. If there are no questions from the commission for city staff, I would move into the public hearing. Any questions? Not will open up to the public. Anyone from the public wishes to call in and has any questions or comments on the rezone request for the readiness center lot located in the east, um, energy, what are we calling it out there, energy? District or?
Uh, Energy Center Third.
Okay, Energy Center Third, so. Again, if you have any questions, please come forward, state your name, any concerns. If you are watching at home, you may call in seven zero one four five six seven zero zero six and ask your questions about the readiness center rezone request. Anyone have any concerns or questions? Does anyone have any concerns or questions on the readiness center rezone? Seeing no one has any questions or concerns, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I'd move to approve this rezoning.
We have a motion to approve ordinance seventeen eighty-eight by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. The second public hearing we're having is Readiness Center Flume, and City Planner Gilbert will explain that to the general public.
Yes, thank you, uh, President Decker. This application before you is to amend the future land use map designation of the subject property from industrial to civic slash public. And this application necessarily follows approval of an amendment to the current zoning map for the same, uh, property. And as of the time of this report, staff has received no public comments and recommends approval of the future land use map amendment from industrial to civic slash public.
Thank you, Ms. Galbert. Any questions? And this will be ordinance seventeen eighty-nine. There are no questions for city staff. I'll move to the public hearing. If there's anyone from the public, there's any questions or concerns with ordinance seventeen eighty-nine, please come forward, state your name, let the commission know your concerns. And this is amending the future land use map. Ordinance seventeen eighty-nine. Anyone from the public? May call in at seven zero one four five six seven zero zero six. Anyone from the public have any concerns or questions on ordinance seventeen eighty-nine? Seeing no one has any questions, I'll close the public, public hearing. Commissioners, any further questions? Discussion on the, the amending of the future land use map? There are none, I'd look for a motion on seventeen eighty-nine.
Mr. President, I would move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Oderman?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next up is public comments, not on the agenda. If anyone from the public wishes to come forward, speak to any issue that is not on the current agenda, please come forward, state your name, and let the commission know. Anyone from the public have any comments? Anyone from the public? Seeing no one from the public has any, uh, comments at this time, I'll close the public hearing section, and we'll move back to Mr. Hirschfeld.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. Uh, we'll move to, uh, the Raven Ridge Apartments then. The applicant is asking for a value of nine million four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars for each of the years twenty-one and twenty-two. The, uh, twenty-one value we have is twelve million two hundred and sixty-five thousand, and the applicant has the same value for, for twenty twenty-two, but I believe that's incorrect. I think our twenty-two value had increased to a fifteen million two hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred dollars is what the value is for the twenty twenty-two valuation year. So, uh, again, the, uh, Vanguard Appraisals is part of their commercial revaluation for twenty nineteen. It decreased the value of, of this property from fifteen million two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to twelve mil- million two hundred and sixty-five thousand. It remained at that level for the years nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and then we were noticing increases in apartment values and raised that value back up again. Uh, Vanguard has suggested we, uh, raise it too high and are looking to decrease it for, for twenty twenty-four. However, I'm still looking to vet those numbers, because, uh, we may be looking at some different sales on that and, and need to, to double check, make sure we're on the same page. But regardless, we, uh, the city staff is looking to make no change to these values. I did want to point out some, uh, history. Uh, we've got this orange chart that we, uh, passed around up there. Uh, the Ryan Inc., which Mr. Block is part of, had abated the Sierra Ridge property for a number of years, uh, each of those before us, except for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty valuation year. And, uh, the values ranged between thirteen point three million, eighteen point five million, but that property did sell this year for twenty-six point four. So, uh, I think through the years, we were a little more close to the value of that property than what the, the applicant was seeking. And, uh, we think we're also a lot closer on this property than the value they're seeking as well. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hirschfeld. Any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld or city staff? Their presentation on Raven Ridge. Mr. Block?
Yeah, thanks guys. Uh, just like to say thank you, uh, for the, uh, last decision there, I think, uh, that was a reasonable conclusion by the board. Um, so I'd like to just kind of give some background on this property as well. So this is a one hundred and twenty-six unit apartment. Uh, it was assessed at twelve million two hundred and sixty-five thousand in twenty twenty-one, and then that was increased to fifteen million two hundred and thirty-three thousand in twenty twenty-two. This property sold, uh, in a portfolio for six million five hundred and thirty-five thousand on December thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, so just before the twenty twenty-two assessment. And that sale price, you see, is less than half of the twenty-two assessment. Uh, it sold as part of a two-property portfolio along with the one hundred and sixty-eight unit timber club apartments, which are located in Tioga. So this is a very similar apartment building in Tioga. Uh, it just has a few more units than the subject that we're talking about. Those two properties sold for a total of fifteen million two hundred and fifty thousand, which is essentially equal to the twenty-two assessment of this one property that we're looking at. So the way that we looked at this sale is, the only way that sale supports the assessment that you guys have, um, would be if that timber club apartments was worth us. Right? Because the, the total sale of the two properties is equal to twenty-two assessments for Raven Ridge. Uh, so then, we also looked at this property's income. Uh, it had, net operating income of six, five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in twenty twenty-one, and then four hundred and fifty-six thousand in twenty twenty-two. Uh, an eight percent cap rate is applied to that, applied to that net operating income, and that's where the cap rate, uh, the indicated value would be just below the sale price. Um, however, like Joe kind of brought up on the last, uh, hearing, uh, we do think that this property could be operated more efficiently, so we completed a merchant income analysis, which assumes a higher rent as well as, uh, more efficient, lower expenses for this property. Uh, and that's where we're coming in at that nine million four hundred and thirty-four thousand, uh, that we see on the abatement application. Um, and then we also looked at sales. There aren't too many sales in the area, but the average of the sales we looked at came in at sixty-four thousand dollars per unit. Um, those, some of those are inferior to the subject. Uh, but still overall, we think that the strongest indicator of value here for this property is that sale price. Uh, the key properties in the portfolio had an identical net operating income essentially in twenty twenty-two. So therefore, if I were to reallocate the total sale price of fifteen million, uh, we'd be coming in at about seven point six two five for the property placed on that sale price. Um, but as with the last property, uh, in the spirit of compromise, we are requesting a slightly higher value of nine million four hundred and thirty-four thousand. Much for the twenty-one and twenty-two assessment.
Thank you, Mr. Block. Any questions for Mr. Block?
Yeah, let me know if there are any questions.
Mr. Hirschfeld, you have any comments on Mr. Block's presentation?
Uh, my biggest comment is this was a portfolio with a property in Tioga. I mean, the, the cap rate that you need to, to sell something in Tioga even, is even higher than what it would be for Williston, which is higher than what it is here. It's no wonder that this property has shown that it's underselling. Just, the, the actual sales price is not a good indicator of what its value is for that, for that very reason. Uh, part of their income approach, uh, they use the, the gross rent mul- multiplier. They were using a six point seven to a seven, uh, for that time period. For new properties, we were in the, the ten to twelve range, which supports our value, and even, uh, with the coming valuation that's decreased, Vanguard's showing a nine. So I mean, they're two-thirds below what, what Vanguard's showing, which, for the current market, which is, you know, we're, we're assuming it's going to go down with the higher interest rates compared to what it was in twenty twelve. I'm just not, uh, keen on the data that they have.
So do, you have something to support the?
Yeah, I'd like to.
That cap rate? I mean?
I'd like to comment on that.
That, that we're using, I mean, tw- t- ten to eleven percent cap rate is?
No, not cap rate, gross rent multiplier.
Oh, gross rent multiplier.
Yeah, I would just like to comment on that, um, a couple of things that Joe mentioned there. So the gross rate multiplier is not a factor that we use too often, but, um, I would just venture to guess that part of the discrepancy there is, uh, the income analysis that we concluded, uh, does not include property taxes. So that's going to decrease the expenses and, and affect that gross rent multiplier. But the other thing that I think is more important, which Joe mentioned, is that Tioga is going to be less valuable than I can assume. I don't disagree with that. There's very few sales there, but from what I've seen, that's probably true. But the total, again, the total sale of these two properties, two properties, is equal to the assessment of just this one. And this one property assessed a unit in the property in Tioga. So, unless the property in Tioga is worth zero dollars, this assessment is overstating the value of the Ridge.
And my response back to that is just simply an apples to oranges comparison. I mean, it's a portfolio sale with one in Tioga. The other thing I want to, I pointed out Sierra Ridge. I mean, we had a twenty-three million dollar valuation on it, sold for twenty-six million. But if you look at the blue chart that I handed out that was sitting at your desk when you arrived, there's sixteen apartments there. We've got all kinds of apartments. Some of them are a little bit comparable, some of them aren't Sierra ridges and that. They stretch from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-three, so, you know, they wouldn't all been comparables back then. But if, what I want you to look at is that column in the middle, that ratio percentage. Our median is eighty-six percent. So, our assessment is eighty-six percent of sales price on all apartments. So, we haven't been overvaluing. Now, you look at some of them, yeah, some of them we've been a little high on, some of them we've been a lot low on. But for the most part, we under-assessed our apartment buildings.
Well, and Joe, the thing I have to say that I really appreciate is that, like, you've got an example here of a time that we did. And by, what, three million, two point five million on the Sierra Ridge on that sale? That's valuable information for us to have, that we've got a recent sale of, that we were in the ballpark, but we were undervaluing it. So, I mean...
I think it's... True and full value on Sierra Ridge on your show was twenty-nine million.
For twenty-three, but not for twenty-one and twenty-two.
Right, but the sale, the sale that probably just occurred, so it did come in under your assessments, not by much, but twenty-nine to twenty-six.
We still have to consider twenty, this request is for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, so.
Sure.
We seem to hear a lot every year about gross rent multiplier not being very much used in the industry, but we seem to always use it. Can you make a comment on that?
Mr. Block used it as well, I mean, in...
But it's not very common, is what he said.
Well, for adware taxation, it is. For lending, it's not. Lending, you know, you're using cap rates, it's a lot more precise. We're just trying to get everybody to an equitable valuation, so it's a lot less effort to use a gross rent multiplier than try and hammer out a, the other method on that through a cap rate. I mean, there's a lot of effort and time can go into establishing a cap rate on two-hundred-and-twenty properties. So, this is a, gross rent multiplier is a quick way then to utilize the income approach without using as much staff time.
Did they supply us with their income financial statements on these? Because we, I mean, we, did we have them?
Yes, in the packets he supplied. It's, got these little three-charge right next to each other.
Yeah, that's our marketing income analysis. We also supplied the properties actuals. They do include some, what we call an adjusted actual statement, which just includes replacement reserves of two percent, as well as taking those property taxes out and accounting for them in a loaded cap rate. So, the actuals of this property are indicating a value far below what we're asking for, and that's why that sale price came in so far below the assessment.
Again, Commissioners, we have three options. For twenty-twenty, one, we can leave it at twelve million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand. The owner has requested nine point four million, excuse me, twelve million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand in twenty-twenty-one. Owner has requested nine million, four hundred and thirty-four thousand for twenty-twenty-one, or we can set an other value. What is the commission's desire?
Mr. Hirschfeld? Do you think that the valuation that we've got on this property is below what it would actually sell for? Similar to Sierra Ridge?
Mr. President, Commissioner Oderman, again, keeping it to the time period of the valuation, twenty-one and twenty-two, I'm a lot more comfortable and confident, our values for this than I was for the hotels. We sell more apartments, we get more data in on apartments, so I've got a higher confidence in what our valuation is on this property.
I'd move to keep it at the twenty-twenty-one assessed value.
I have a motion to, to no change the value for twenty-twenty-one of twelve million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Second.
The motion is by Commissioner Oderman, second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. For twenty-twenty-two, Commissioners. The valuation is fifteen million, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred. The request is nine million, four hundred and thirty-four thousand.
Mr. Hirschfeld, can you explain the significant jump between twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two here? Is this just the gross rent multiplier?
So, the increase, and I'm trying to remember back to when we had our Board of Equalization meeting, was based on sales. I mean, we showed that eighty-six percent of kind of where our median is over the last several years. I think it was even a larger increase at that time. So, we gave that increase to all apartments, and then there was some added obsolescence to larger, to the larger apartments. We pulled some of that off, and so I believe that was warranted. Looking at what Vanguard's coming back with, either we're looking at the interest rates starting to affect these properties, or maybe we increased it too much and should have went by half at that point. But for that year, you know, I've got a high confidence that that increase was warranted, pulling off that additional obsolescence at that time and putting it back on and bringing it back to that par one-hundred level where other, other commercial properties were at, I believe it's very warranted for all apartments.
I'd move for no change to the twenty-twenty-two assessed value as well.
We have a motion for a no change to the twenty-twenty-two value of fifteen million, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Second.
The motion's by Commissioner Oderman, second's by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Mr. President, real quick before we move on here. I'd like to request that we maybe have like a work session or something like that where we can sit down with Mr. Hirschfeld and just talk through some of the philosophy or the theory behind valuations. Maybe we can have Vanguard, maybe we can have somebody from the state tax commissioner's office or something like that, but just get a deeper understanding of, you know, I know we have the tolerance that we have to be in and things like that, but I don't necessarily understand why the state sets those numbers where they set them. And is it, is it an arbitrary thing that the state just sets and they take what the valuations that we give them? And, because the state doesn't do assessments and valuations, correct?
Not outside of the centrally assessed and some of the other specialties.
Yeah, and so, like, I guess I just, I just need a deeper understanding of, or maybe a more solid understanding of why we do things the way we do it. And I think that's something that would behoove us as Commissioners, because we get asked these questions a lot, like, you know, is this just, you're throwing darts at a dartboard and that's how you get your valuations? And sometimes it kind of feels like that. And so, we want to be able to, I don't, I want to be able to support the work that you're doing, and just having a deeper understanding of where the state's coming from, where we're coming from at the assessing office, I think would be good for all of us, because we can support you, you can support us, and we can just get some better information. So, I mean, I don't think that's anything that needs to be made mandatory for Commissioners to attend or anything like that, but maybe just a good informal setting where we could sit down and ask questions. Would you have any objections to that?
No objections from assessing staff.
Can we work on something like that?
Yeah, we'll work, we'll work on with Mr. Dossinger, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Hirschfeld. Next up is our monthly hiring report, presented by Mrs. Dominic. Welcome.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. First up on my report tonight is police officer positions. We currently have five openings. This is open until filled for both the lateral police officer and police officer positions. We do have one applicant in background right now. We had corporal police officer promotions. We did promote Aaron Bates, Evan Kinto, Jesse Kubik, and Mike Legler to the corporal position. We had a, we have an opening in the records, as a records clerk, records department. We are in the interview stage for that position. For the street department, we have four openings, a street maintenance operator. That position is open until filled. We have a street maintenance foreman position that's open until filled. We recently did some interviews, no hires were made. And we have a fleet shop technician position open until filled. Looks like we're not having much luck getting applicants for that as well. Solid waste operator, we have four positions open. This is open until filled. We made one hire, Devin Nash McGee, and we have, we are in the interview stage with other applicants that have applied. We had a part-time bailiff position open for our court security. That's been really difficult for us to get applicants. I think we moved on and decided to fill that with police officers who already work for us, as we did in the past. Public works director position is open until the end of November. Fire lieutenant, that's an internal-only position, and we are in the process of getting that going and interview set up. Part-time firefighter, we are in the background stage for that position. We are looking for a new library director. That position closes on the twenty-fifth of November, so we'll begin the interview, interviews for that soon. Limited our library page, we are in the background stage for that position. Twenty-twenty-four position was approved for the marketing and events coordinator. We have opened that internally, and we'll begin that interview process real soon. The twenty-twenty-four project engineer position is open until the end of the month, so we will take applicants until then and then start the interviews. And we have a property appraiser technician. They have done the interviews, to my understanding, on that position, so we're waiting to see the results of that. And I would take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mrs. Dominic. Any questions for Mrs. Dominic on the monthly HR report?
Thank you.
Starting on, thank you. Keep up the good work. We'll move into public works. First thing up, we have a Ryan Kilwin agreement. This will be presented by Mr. Zastopol, utility manager. Welcome.
Good evening, President Decker and Commissioners. This agreement would allow Ryan Kilwin to connect to our water distribution system. Ryan Kilwin, he lives outside of city limits and is not capable of being served by Southwest Water. Since Southwest Water, it doesn't have the capacity to serve Ryan Kilwin, they would waive all their fees and assessments. This would be one of the first contracts that we would have with Southwest, or with Ryan, or with our water side to serve Ryan, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Zastopol. Any questions for Mr. Zastopol?
Explain to me why they don't have any connection fees?
So, Southwest Water, they have a water line that's on the other side of the river, and they don't want to bore underneath the river to access Ryan Kilwin to give him water. And then also, too, there is another water line that's on Eighth Street Southeast, which would go through somebody else's property, and it's a long ways, so Southwest Water would not have the capacity to serve him at this point. We have a water line that's running right on Sixth Avenue Southeast, which would be all connected right from his property to our main.
But when somebody builds a house in town, we charge them to hook onto the water? But we're not going to charge him?
Uh, no.
No, there's no Southwest fees.
Southwest Water fees.
So, they're, but we are charging him.
Yeah, so he would have, he would have all this connection fees as a, as a normal...
I misunderstood you then.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, Southwest Water would not assess any fees with their contract with them.
I got you. All right. My apologies, I just misunderstood, so.
Yeah, no, you would have to follow our permitting, our chapter thirty-eight, all our fees, permits, and connection fees with that.
Perfect. That's all I needed, thank you.
Any other questions on this agreement?
Mr. Zastopol, if this is, if this is the first agreement of this type, any concerns with a bunch of people coming and approaching us to hook up in the city water?
So, with this here contract, this is the, there, we have, without the Southwest Water actually having the capacity to connect with us, they would, you know, there's...
Yeah, they're kind of landlocked here.
Yeah, they are, on that.
Yeah, I think most of the other ones, you look at like Palm Beach Road, which lies right outside the city, they have a line that's running there by Southwest Water. You look at a lot of the, just outside the city, Southwest Water does have a, a line that's accessible. This one is, like you said, you just, you put it, he's landlocked. I mean, he's, he's right in there and right outside city limits, and there's just no other access for him. There may, there may be a few other unique ones out there, but I think with the river, it offers some challenges right there.
I mean, I think you can make a strong argument for an exception here just because of the fact that it's landlocked and there's no other options. So, but I just had to ask the question, so. I'd move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Zastopol. Oh, you're going to do the fee schedule too right away? Whoa. Up for bad again. Okay, Mrs. Zastopol, our fee schedule.
Okay, this recommended fee schedule for Kilwin is equal to the city base rate, our meter base rate. Okay, this recommended fee schedule for Kilwinde is equal to the city base rate, or meter base rate. He wants to put a one-inch meter into his, into his house that would supply him the water. This base rate is, would be the meter rate plus 10%. And this is consistent with what we have done in the past with our wastewater contracts that we have that would connect to our sewer. So with the $15 rate for the one-inch meter, with a 10% increase, becomes $16.50 per month. And city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Zastopol. Any questions? There are no questions. This should be, let me grab the resolution, 32-2023. Correct, Mrs. Binstock? Yep. 32-2023. There are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. We have the Brightly Software Agreement, and I think Mr. Zurov's up for bat tonight, so, welcome.
Thank you, President Decker, Commission. Our environmental compliance specialist was going to present this in the PFAS, but she had a family emergency, so I'm pitch hitting for her. First, the Brightly Software Agreement is, updates our current computer management maintenance system, which we currently have OpWorks. This software updates that. It'll have many modules for the different areas in Public Works. It integrates into our GIS. It'll bring in our service requests, work orders, preventive maintenance. And this was a, excuse me, this was a 2024 approved budgeted item. This has been looked at by City Attorney Winko, and Public Works staff recommends approval.
And this should be seamless, no?
Well, that's where we have some integration. We can export our OpWorks stuff in Excel and then bring it in. So we did ask them to help us integrate that into this new software.
Does that affect anything on billing side or anything when it goes out, you know, how our Public Works app?
Yep, it shouldn't affect that.
Anything?
No.
Okay.
In fact, it should be easier to submit requests and also give exact locations of where that request is at, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Zurov. Any questions? Other questions? Thought I'd look for a motion on this Brightly proposal.
I'd move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Otterman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mrs. Zurov, you have a request to opt out of the MDL cases.
Yes, and this is why the environmental specialist was going to present this, but I'm going to give it my best and go through it. This is the PFAS settlement that the city received regarding DuPont and 3M. Let me explain a little bit about PFAS to begin with. PFAS are widely used, long-lasting chemicals, components which break down very slowly over time. Because of their widespread use and their persistence in the environment, many PFAS are found in the blood of people and animals all over the world, and are present at low levels in a variety of food products and in the environment. PFAS are found in water, air, fish, and soil at locations across the nation and the globe. Scientific studies have shown that the exposure to some PFAS in the environment may be linked to harmful health effects in humans and animals. There are thousands of PFAS chemicals, and they are found in many different consumer, commercial, and industrial projects, products. This makes it challenging to study and access the potential human health and environmental risks. UCMR-5, which is Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule 5, is currently underway testing public water systems across the US for 29 PFAS chemicals and lithium. The UCMR-5 sampling tests span over several years, 2023 to 2025. Final results in understanding PFAS across the nation in drinking water will not be finalized until 2026. UCMR-3, which is the Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule 3, tested for some PFAS at the Dickinson Water Treatment Plant for six PFAS compounds between 2013 and 2015. All compounds in non-detect ranges at Dickinson and the other 12 North Dakota water systems tested. There was no non-detect on all those. So, any questions about PFAS itself? I think we've all heard a lot about it. There's multiple chemicals. So, I'm going to give you a little background on the PFAS. The settlement information, which was sent to all public water supply systems in the United States, have one or more impacted, that have one or more impacted water sources as of June 22nd, 2023. And all active public water systems that do not have one or more impacted water sources as of June 22nd, 2023 are required to test for certain PFAS under this US UCMR-5, the 29 compounds. Regardless of whether you file a claim or receive any distribution under the settlement, unless you timely opt out as described below, you will be bound by the settlement and any judgment or any final disposition related to the settlement, including the release set forth of settlement agreement, and will be precluded from pursuing claims against 3M separately if those claims are within the scope of the release. So there's a lot of information here. And if you don't opt out, you're automatically in it. One of the things that water systems in North Dakota have found is that if you opt out, it generally gives, they were concerned about the water, that we haven't found a lot of these chemicals in yet, and there's a lot more years to find these chemicals in, in our system, whether it be water, wastewater, or even our, you know, the soils and leachate. So we feel it's too preliminary to opt out of this, or, excuse me, too preliminary to stay in it, and it's better to opt out. This was agreed upon by the city Grand Forks attorneys, Minot, Bismarck. Grand Forks opted out 11/16. Bismarck Commission opted out on 10/24, and along with Minot opted out. One of the things was that, after review of the settlements and information obtained with other cities in North Dakota and throughout the US, because PFAS is still coming into our water system, there's no known marketable way to remove PFAS. It is recommended to opt out of this litigation by other Public Works directors and city attorneys throughout the state. So, at this point, I know Christina Winko, our city attorney, is working with the Grand Forks attorneys. They're kind of taking the lead on all the paperwork needed. So at this time, it would be just a recommendation by the commission to opt out. There might be additional paperwork or additional things coming forward as this moves, moves ahead. But at this time, we need to make the decision to opt out or stay in by December 4th and December 11th concurrently with DuPont and 3M. So at this point, I tried to get through it as best I could. If you have any questions?
So if we stay in it, just reading through this, it looks like there, anybody that stays in it is getting like a lump sum. Is that my understanding?
That, and it's still by the judge, the multi-district litigation judge, but that's my understanding. And some of it, too, on water system side is, you know, we're not showing anything. But if we stay in it, how about our future issues that we might have? And that, that's, that's the reason why
Okay.
most of the cities are opting out. Michelle Close, who's the utility director in Bismarck, has done a lot of work on it, and, you know, talked to her about this. And that's, that's the way they're looking at it, and we're just following suit.
Okay. Well, I guess, in my opinion, I guess we need to follow the recommendations of our legal counsel and our Public Works. Seems to be, but I will leave that up to you as Commissioners. I guess I read through it. There is a substantial amount, but to your point, Mr. Zurov, we could have differing results on our tests down the road.
Right.
So. Commission, what is your desire?
I'd move to opt out.
We have a motion to opt out by Commissioner Otterman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion? Hearing no discussion, we will vote. Mr. Otterman.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries to opt out of the lawsuit.
Thank you, and as we get more information, I'll try to keep you updated on how that proceeds. Thank you very much.
And, Mr. Zurov, you're going to tackle Public Works this month, right?
That's right. Only got a couple left.
Only a couple left. How am I expecting like animation on these slides and?
Well, I was practicing my dancing, but it didn't look good.
The December meeting would be your last one, right?
Uh, I'm not leaving until the end of January, so.
So we can expect a backflip in January?
I don't want to go to my funeral. Yes, we have our monthly report for the month of October. Again, our services that Public Works provides. And some of the training. North Dakota American Public Works held a winter maintenance operator workshop, October 17th, in Grand Forks. Forty-seven attendees were there total, with nine from Dickinson Public Works. That's something we've wanted to put forward for the last couple of years, so we're going to make it annually with this North Dakota Water Pollution Control Conference. Also, we had five water department employees attend that conference, which I thought was a great conference. Next year it'll be in Minot. Public Works participated in the Tricker Trunk. We brought, we brought the vacuum truck, garbage truck, and actually it was a payloader, not the motor grader. But I was down there trying to play with the lights of the payloader. I think I got it to flash. But I was amazed at the amount of people there, amount of kids. Actually, I had to run and buy more candy because I felt bad. We were out pretty quick. Other special things going on, Fleet and other staff helped the installation of over 100 new radios for our Siren 2020 project. I think we have them all installed, so that was quite a project for all our radios at the Public Works Department. I want to talk a little bit about our October snowstorm. That's our first one of the season. This just shows the breadcrumbs of where our vehicles were, colors by each vehicle. And then this one, I did ask our street supervisor, Scott Hurning, to come tonight. If, just so, if anybody has any questions, I wanted him to be, so that I could answer the questions with his help. So, on this PowerPoint graph right here, you can see the green is everything that we've completed. And we just hit on 3rd Avenue North right here. 3rd Avenue, yeah, north going, north and south. 3rd Avenue North, as you see the different vehicles and passes going north. For example, that one had 27 passes going north with salt and brine that day. Just to show how many times we are on a road and we, and we go up and down it. And that one specifically, I think we had a combination of things because it didn't, it was hard to fight ice that day, ice and snow. We had warm roads, we had changing temperatures, we had winds, we had moisture changing. And so every time we tried something, something else happened with the temperatures. And sometimes you just can't beat Mother Nature. So we had a lot of ice. We had, in some areas, I know 21st, I was up there at one point, it was clear, and I think in 20 minutes, the wind came over by rough rider, and it was a sheet of ice within 15 to 20 minutes. So sometimes it's, it's, it's really difficult, but I just wanted to bring it up to the commission. And I know that was our first one of the year, but there'll be more to come. Unfortunately, I believe there will be more to come this year. And I wanted, again, to have Scott here, if you guys have any questions about our operations, you know, what we're doing for this year. Scott has got everything prepared, very well-prepared for salt, for equipment, blowers. The only thing we don't have is a full staff again, but we do have our contractors ready when, when needed. We've met with them, and so we're prepared in that regard.
Mr. Hurning, did you get to deploy any of the new equipment?
Yeah, a little bit. Starting to get more people trained and everything in that and stuff.
Okay. Good little test storm for the new stuff. All right. Hopefully that's all working well, the new stuff. Then you have some costs, Mr. Zurov. I see you got some cost total ready for just, just for that.
And I do, just to bring that up again, that snowstorm, we went through 23.7 tons of salt. We went through 54,522 gallons of brine and 16 cutting edges, which is a lot of cutting edges. And why so many cutting edges?
That was just two machines, basically, that were just older graders running with that, and we were doing cutting edges. That's just because of the speed going across the, trying to get level ones open as fast as we could.
Along with that, we had 106, 106 overtime and call-out hours. So, you know, sometimes, much as we have out there, you know, we're still going to have some rough conditions out on the roads, and I just want people to be sure to be prepared for ice and slow down and be prepared as much as possible.
Mr. Zurov, with all the patching that we did this spring and summer, any of that get damaged during the?
Not really. I mean, you're going to get a little bit of loose rock that came off on it, but as far as the main structure is still there.
Good.
Usually if anything was patched, it's a start of a hole, so that patch is already sealed in there and stuff. So you're going to get, you did get a little bit of surface rock that came off of it, but that's pretty normal, actually, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Scott? I got him here, just, you know? Okay, we'll move on. Thanks, Scott.
Keep up the good work.
Yeah, appreciate his, his time and his group. Service requests for the month. Looks like we're kind of right in the middle of 85. These are service requests that come in at Public Works. Just right, an average of about 85. This is a review of the service requests we have. Solid Waste gets the most calls about pickups and can replacements. For October, Forestry, they have an advisory meeting the 14th. They continue to remove diseased elm trees, diseased elm trees. Forestry and Street all got together and cleared alleyways in downtown on Highway 22. That was a great project of about a week. All the crews helped to remove the vegetation, which was long overdue. Also, Blake started the shelter belt project at the water reclamation facility. Removed some planters downtown and assisted in the snow removal at the Public Safety Center. Fleet work orders were right in there at 91, about normal between the last couple of years. Previously, 143, we had a new mechanic come in. We continue to get a lot of work orders. The reason it's a little down in October is because of all the radios and they were assisting with those. So that should continue to increase. Fleet work orders, solid waste recycling, buildings and grounds were the top winners for the month of October. Solid waste tonnages. Looked like they're right in there on the last couple of years. We had, what, 5,636? Looked like they're right in there on the last couple of years. We had, what, five thousand, six hundred and thirty-six tons for October. Scale transactions stay right in there. They consistently are in that three thousand mark with the three thousand, one hundred and sixty-four scale slips in October. That, you know, that place is consistently busy, consistently lined up, and every day, there's a lot of action going on at the baler. By the way, this week, I wanted to tell you our regular collection on, we're going to have regular collection on Friday. So, if you have a Friday pickup, you're gonna have regular collection. The baler will be open till two on Friday. So, we're closed a little early on Friday, but we'll be open.
And on Thursday pickups are tomorrow, just for the general public.
Thank you. Yep, always on Wednesday. Recent weather conditions made it difficult at the landfill. One reason they, we wanted to bring up this slide is with kind of the short staff on the bailing side. We're not bailing as much, so we're hauling out here. So, instead of just the city vehicles coming out, we have all the commercial vehicles coming out of the landfill, which makes it much more difficult to keep the roads going and keep everybody happy. The landfill, our new lift station is working well. I wanted to bring that up a little bit. The amount of gallons pumped from the landfill lift station continues to be quite a bit. Also, in October, we did our quarter, or semi-annual groundwater monitoring. Those who don't know, we have groundwater monitoring wells around the landfill that we test semi-annually to test for chemicals or leachate coming in and contamination throughout. And we don't have any hits, again, for the groundwater monitoring wells. Utility billing work orders are up considerably. We're replacing all the commercial meters. So, we have about a hundred meters left, hundred, a hundred and twenty-five commercial meters left. And then, we did order the final of residential, which will be continued on twenty-four. A lot of those in state addition. We haven't changed to the new meter yet, but we will be changing those this next twenty-twenty-four, probably changing those, so they're all compatible with the new fixed base AMI system. South West Water Authority, amount of water we purchased, you can see it's down where it was in twenty-twenty-two, about fifty-nine million gallons, which is about half our water bill. It's about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars was our water bill for October. Month before, it was about six hundred thousand. So, that's, if you complain about your water bill, just look at our water. Water utilities, we replaced some invested cement on First. Thirteen-hundred block of First Avenue East. This started with a smaller water break, smaller water break on the main. And that was fixed, and then it broke again. And one thing with AC pipe, after years, even before it's getting old, it's real fragile. Anytime you get an AC water break, you go in and fix it, repair it. All the water, subsidence, all that activity, more than half the time, you're gonna get another water break somewhere else. So, we had another water break, and then after that, looking at the length of AC line in that block, we decided just to remove the whole AC line and put PBC in. That's issues we have, that happen with either older cast iron or older AC water line. Picture of replaced and repair storm drain. Water utilities winterized seventeen hundred and thirty-six fire hydrants. That's what they do in October. Three operators checking, greasing the threads, checking the hydrant, checking for water, either pumping water out or adding RBE antifreeze to seventeen hundred hydrants. Water reclamation facility, we had, you can see the loads and the gallons for land applied. And water reclamation facility affluent to Hart River was fifty-seven gallons, and we sold fourteen million gallons. We are also have our cell four full, and we're going to start filling cell three to have as much water stored as we can for affluent to try to, you know, reduce the amount we ship to the river and to try to keep for future use. Call-out and overtime hours, you can see that breakdown. We had three hundred and ninety-one total hours of overtime and call-outs in October. You see a lot of that, water utilities, that water breaks, lift stations, things like that, that kept everybody busy in October. New staff, Morgan Mathias came back to solid waste. So, hopefully, I mean, that took, we didn't retain somebody, we regained somebody. So, I thought that was great. So, you know, I think hopefully, things are moving where we're gonna get more employees either coming back or applying again. So, it's great to have her back. She's a, has her CDL, and she is one of our truck drivers, and a good driver she is. Any questions?
I have one question, and this was posed to me by a citizen. Fire hydrants along Twenty-First and some of the other places in town have bags hanging from them. What is, people are assuming it's for dog waste. I would say I don't think we're that considerate.
You know, I saw that by the middle school just the other day, and I was gonna make a note to figure out why the heck there's bags flying there. I don't know. I'll ask the utilities manager. I had the same question.
And I was told if there's an orange bag, that means it's not in commission. It's...
Yeah, it's usually over the hydrant.
Yeah, but these are just hanging there.
I see him.
Yeah, tied on.
Actually, that, I just, I'm not aware of the white bags tied on. The orange bags do mean that they are out of commission, and we are switching actually over to like a collar that goes on to one of the two-and-a-half inch caps on the side.
These are like regular...
All along that trail, Twenty-First.
Unless somebody is putting them up there for dogs.
Well, I wonder if it's people out walking, and they just hang them so they don't blow further, but you'd think it would fit in their pocket to just take home. So, I, I don't know, because I've noticed them too when I'm out walking and...
Yeah, so, I guess we don't have an answer yet.
I'll ask utilities manager's Ostapul to dive in.
All right.
Find out about it, and we'll get them removed.
All righty.
Anything else?
Anyone, anything else? Thank you, Mrs. Zeroff.
Have a great Thanksgiving, everybody.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our monthly report from the police department. This will be handled by our, what is your official title, Mr. Hanson? Deputy?
Deputy Chief.
Deputy Chief. Deputy Chief Hanson, so, welcome.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President Decker. Commissioners, I'm light fill for Joe. Chief Siani's trying to go harvest a deer here before his term is up, so I told him that I would pinch-hit for him, similar to a couple of the pinch hitters here. But we'll go through our October report here for you.
I appreciate that you used the proper term there, too.
Harvesting?
Yeah, that was good.
So, in similar nature to how Chief Siani has this pitched out, we kind of started from, when does the call enter our building and when we process it and how we process it? It's a similar nature here. You can see how many nine-one-one calls came in. You'll see this as kind of like a theme throughout our October report. We were slightly busier than past years in October. We were not really sure exactly why, but we had more calls for service. We were actually the second busiest month calls for service-wise. You can see that here. We had a slight increase in nine-one-one emergency calls. We have an increase in non-emergency calls. And then, we had another increase in outboard calls also coming out of our PCF center. As I mentioned earlier, if you look at the twenty-three to twenty-four numbers, we are increased in October. Second busiest month we've had so far in twenty-three compared to our July numbers. Busy with traffic safety. We didn't have any grant time. This was, most of this was just a regular old patrol active time here. As you can see, we had three hundred and ninety-one traffic stops. Nice split between citations and warnings. Our heaviest citation would have been our speeding situations we had in town. Total accidents, we had eighty-nine of these. It is fairly common, I guess, low, potentially even for some of the other months. If we were to take that snippet of time where we had our snowstorm that caused Mr. Zeroff and his crew problems, we would be considerably lower. But those road conditions did degrade. We ended up having, with that, I want to say a two-day span, we were north of twenty-some accidents. So, they were very busy. Our street people were very busy out there trying to process a lot of accidents. Thankfully, when you look at things, you see that we have one pedestrian accident. That actually is categorized as a pedestrian accident, but it was actually somebody on like one of those electric motorized bicycles. Uninjured, not transported to the hospital in any way. Same thing goes for injury accidents right there, categorized as injury accidents, but never did we have to have EMS actually transporting anybody. Everybody, very minor accidents out of these situations. We had a hundred and sixty-one total arrests, which is slightly higher than, I guess, our typical average October numbers. Our theft and crimes involving violence are a little higher. We'll kind of touch on a couple of these notable incidents here later when we touch on some of our highlight cases. This one is just a really chaotic graph that we like to put in here to confuse you. It goes in there and kind of breaks it out per, per status offense, if you're curious. If you read up on sentry code, obviously, you want to stay away from an A felony if you're a criminal. We didn't have any of those, thankfully, but our B misdemeanors, A misdemeanors were higher this go-round. This was our criminal investigations workload. This is specifically just for their call-outs. So, after hours, call-outs, a couple of ones to highlight onto here. Would have been later in the notable incidents, we'll talk about a sex crime that they ended up making a felony arrest on, which was a nice case that kind of worked alongside our task force. Patrol officers and CID all kind of put a case together, worked the case really nicely. And then, we were also working with our brothers and sisters over at the fire department. We had a couple of structured fires that brought CID out, and we're... We haven't made any arrests on those, but they've been processing those, and those are still under investigation from our October structure fires. This is currently what our Investigations Division has going on, thirty-eight open cases. We were able to close eighteen of them. Three of, made three arrests, we sent one up to the state's attorney. They're still processing forty-two. Consider that number forty-two, they're also down two staff members currently as we sit. We're in a process of trying to get them one back. We've been working kind of one under in this division all calendar year. This is their involvement. This is breaking out what cases they're working on here. You can see agency assists, sex crimes kind of highlighted the top of that. So, our notable incidents coming off of the investigations piece of this, our criminal analyst really assisted us with processing and building two criminal profiles that we had had. A couple of situations happening throughout town at a couple of different businesses where we had some thefts going on. One of them actually involving a firearm that was stolen from a local business. So, we really put this to a high priority list. Our criminal analyst put together a nice profile for us, got us suspect descriptions. And again, through a nice team effort, our patrol guys were able to get hands on them, brought investigators out, we wrote the process, and made a couple of arrests out of that. That'd be the, excuse me, that's the third one down. I jumped down to. The top one there is one of the sex assaults that we had discussed earlier. Then, we had our fire piece into this. And again, we had another press release that we had sent out. This was our last one. This is the one that was involving Bravera Bank over by the T-Rex Mall, where we had a call of a robbery in progress, where a female was inside of the bank armed with a weapon. Officers actually responded, were able to clean that thing up from the parking lot. But a couple of really nice wins from team efforts and a couple of just really nice wins before things kind of spiraled too far and got out of control. Behavioral health, these numbers, again, are a little higher than normal. We've seen these kind of trend in this direction kind of all calendar year, as we've been keeping a little bit more of a tab on these. Between our welfare checks and our mental health subjects specifically. One piece to highlight into here, again, that didn't have room to throw it in our notable incident sections, is another one, just a quick action planning and equipment piece from our patrol officers. Is we had one of these calls that you're seeing inside of this behavioral health was... We had a call of an individual who was inside of a business that was homicidal, suicidal, armed with a weapon. Patrol officers got there, and we're trying to deescalate the situation, when the situation was no longer allowed to kind of contain and keep control. They were able to utilize less lethal tactics and were able to bring the situation to a resolution before it became much more catastrophic than it was. That individual was just given mental health treatment, because that's kind of what we were working on there. So, as you can see, like, this is, this is one of those spots in our agency where it's just really tricky to try to play, what card are we playing here in this situation? Maybe sometimes it's not criminal, but definitely has a criminal element to it.
Deputy Chief Hanson, just as you see those numbers continue to rise, like, what's the, what's the game plan? What's the strategy?
Yeah, a lot of it is our stakeholders that we possess here as a community as a whole. You know, we're just one, we're one member into this puzzle. But, you know, we have our officers that are constantly in communications with Badlands Human Service Center. We're constantly in contact. I know we're on a, we now have myself actually on a board that oversees Sanford is now utilizing a new program that's getting spun up. Kind of an outreach program for like sixteen to twenty-five-year-olds trying to get more help. Just lack of services, to be honest with you. We just don't have a ton of services to be able to provide people, and this isn't just localized. This is just the state in general, kind of a trend that's going on. But a lot of the things that we would like to get people or put people in, they're full, not able to get people places, so people are spending more time out in the public. Yeah, good question, though, sir. School resource officers, as you can see, kind of a breakdown between where we are at. We do have our Dickinson State University is being staffed much more regularly. Luckily, we've had no citations issued there. Our high school, middle school continue to kind of be our heaviest lift. In our school resource officer division, records, again, understaffed, and they were, they were busy this, this week, this month of October. Sixty-nine warrants processed, twenty sex offender registrations. We just finished up our sex offender op. That'll be on the next month's meeting, so I'll let Chief Siani, if he's done processing that deer that hopefully he gets, he'll come and kind of talk and mention that piece. Our animal shelter has been nice and quiet. Things are starting to slow down from their peak months of the summer. Our number-one offender continues to be the running at large, though, like usual. Here's a breakdown of what the shelter has been busy with, how many different animals came in, specifically dogs, cats, and then where they went after being processed. Here's our staff training. This goes for sworn and non-sworn training, kind of on the downslope of our, our training budget calendar year. But we did host a week-long training, which was really beneficial in-house, that we had even brothers and sisters from the fire department come across. We had somebody from Sanford Health that co-ops things with the SWAT team come in, did some first responder, basic medical. Also, had one of our task force individuals go through the drug basic, and then we had a couple of patrol officers going through an advanced roadside interdiction, which is basically like, think of it like a DUI plus type of a training for SFST information. Our community relations, we had a DUI checkpoint earlier in the year. We had a red ribbon week. We touched a little bit already tonight on the touch of truck, or excuse me, on the Tricker Trunk. But I did not attend. It was a little too cold, but we did have a few people that braved and went out there, passed out candy. And then Shelley did hit this piece, but we are hiring. If you're looking at joining a great team, we'd love to take you in. We have had, we have had a surplus of people that have come in and done ride-alongs with us. Those have gone well. We've had a lot of people in our current system, whether it be our programs that we're running in the college and in the high school. We're finally starting to see some fruits from that, so our applicant pool is getting larger. So, we're getting closer, but we'll still, still take any good men and women that want to come in and check us out, see what they have. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Any questions for Matt before he heads out? Chief Siani might need help dragging a deer out of a rain or something, you know? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris. Have a good one.
Thanksgiving.
All right, we'll move into community development. First item up, we have a rezone for TCB subdivision. And that'll be presented by City Planner Galbert.
Thank you, President Decker. I'm City Planner Matthew Galabert. This is the second reading for final approval of REZ zero zero five, twenty-twenty-three, which came before the city commission on November seventh. This is an application to rezone the subject property as described. Again, I'm gonna go read the lot and block number. Oh, this one off memory is Lot One, Block One of the TCB subdivision, sorry. From general commercial and community commercial to only community commercial. This has been described as a cleanup item, which staff identified during the review of an associated minor plat application for this property. It appears that the subdivision had been previously platted with smaller commercial and residential lots, and it's believed that a transpositional error may have occurred sometime after this property was replatted in twenty-fifteen and subsequently rezoned to general commercial, leaving behind a small portion. portion still community commercial. So based on the property's location as a nexus between the industrially oriented east business loop and the transition to downtown commercial to the west and single family residential properties to the north, staff has, has determined that rezoning the property to community commercial yields the most appropriate designation in terms of local land use compatibility. Current development on the site includes gas station and convenience store, which currently adheres to the zoning standards of the community commercial district. So as of the time of this report, staff has received no public comment and recommends approval to rezone the subject property from general commercial and community commercial to community commercial. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for City Planner? This is ordinance seventeen eighty-seven.
Move to approve seventeen eighty-seven.
We have a motion to approve the second reading and final passage of ordinance seventeen eighty-seven by Commissioner Otterman.
Second?
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item up is East Broadway Dam, and this is a proposal from Final Plan Design, right? A bar proposal. And this will be presented by Assistant City Engineer Marshick.
Good evening, President Decker, Commissioners. For your consideration, we have a proposal with BAR for the East Broadway Dam final plans. We had contracted with BAR previously to bring us forward to thirty percent plan design with our choice of rock riffles in replacement of the East Broadway Dam. That dam is a low head dam, which is, has safety concerns with the roller action. It's also raided and very poor condition. So we really need to continue forward with this project to address the maintenance concerns and the concerns with safety. The proposal from, from BAR for the dam includes finalization of the project plans, facilitation of property donations and easements. We do have an adjacent property owner who has reached out with interest at donating their property to the city. What this proposal will help us with is looking at appraising the property value. So both parties know what they're getting or giving as we move forward, and that would help us get the proper documentation that we need as we move forward with the donation. They will, then BAR will also help us with permitting, acquisition, and bidding assistance. Please note that BAR's proposal would move forward based on our approval of a grant from the Department of Water Resources. That is a forty-sixty split. This has changed from previously where it was a forty or sixty-forty. They now look at these as more of a recreational, and that's why there is more buy-in for the community. We are looking at other funding opportunities that we can apply to this project in addition to the water resources. We are looking at a standard hourly rate with a not to exceed amount of one hundred forty-two thousand, five hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. City engineering staff is recommending approval of BAR's proposal. Any questions for me on this proposal from BAR regarding the East Broadway Dam?
Thank you, Mrs. Marshick. Any questions for Mrs. Marshick?
I do have one.
Okay.
Reading through this task order hydraulic modeling, it states in there that it would provide no rise to the current level that the river's at.
That's correct. Due to the floodplain, we need to maintain the base flood elevation. So the change in the structure would have to keep that base flood elevation at the same level.
Okay, so it's not going to be lower though, right? Because it does not stipulate that it can be lower. Because if we get lower, we're going to have a crick running through our city.
Understood. When we worked with BAR for the thirty percent plans, that was one of the comments with going to a different structure, which two of the options were these rock riffles or removal of the dam structure entirely. A concern that we brought forward had to do with what's the water levels going to look like upstream. So of course, depending on what kind of year it is, will, the water elevations will change. But the intent of the rock riffles is really to make it more of a recreational area, and we want the water levels to stay
At, at current.
At a good, at a good current.
And I understand, you know, we get droughts. We get, you know, sometimes it's going to be higher. It's going to flow over the top. It's not going to look that nice when we get spring runoff. But my concern is if somehow it's modeled that it's lower, then all of a sudden you, if you go down the Hart River, you just go east on the Hart River.
Understood, right?
It's two, two feet wide at points. I mean, you can take a good jump and jump across the Hart River. I mean, I mean, that's
We have shared that with BAR, that that's a concern. We want to make sure that this is a nice recreational area for us moving forward.
I mean, it's not the Missouri, but I mean, it's, it's our little river, so I'd like to keep it, you know? Okay, any other questions on this proposal? Now I'd look for a motion on the East Broadway Dam BAR proposal.
Mr. President, I'd move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you got another one for us?
You're stuck with me for a couple more.
All right.
President Decker and Commissioners, before you is the preliminary engineering report for the upcoming twenty twenty-four road maintenance project. This project is city number twenty twenty-four oh one, and it's an integral component of our twenty twenty-four capital improvement budget. Additionally, you'll find two resolutions proposing the creation of special improvement district number twenty twenty-four oh one dash one and twenty twenty-four oh one dash two. This item addresses twenty twenty-four oh one dash one. Our project aims to address specific maintenance requirements outlined in our twenty nineteen pavement management report, supplement onsite assessments, preliminary cost estimates, and comprehensive staff deliberations. The SID number addressed twenty twenty-four oh one dash one addresses a location in the area east of the water treatment plant facility and south of Broadway, as mentioned at the October seventeenth commission meeting. This includes parts of the Polensky subdivision. We have a map up here showing that location. The city engineering staff is recommending the approval of what I believe would be Resolution seventeen eighty-eight. Would that be correct, President Decker?
Okay, so the resolution.
Oh, resolution thirty-three?
It should be thirty-three dash twenty twenty-three.
Thank you for that. With that, engineering staff recommends approval of Resolution thirty-three dash twenty-third, twenty-three. Any questions regarding this item or SID number twenty twenty-four oh one dash one?
Any questions, Commissioners, for Mrs. Marshick?
I guess I'm looking, I'm scrolling through here for the costs. And the total cost that we have on the cost sheet, the two point one million, that's for both SIDs?
That's for both SIDs, and it doesn't include the remainder of the road maintenance project for twenty twenty-four. So our budget for the year for road maintenance is seven point five million. That's what we're aiming at for our road maintenance budget. The two point four is based on these two special improvement districts, the total cost.
Any other questions for Mrs. Marshick?
I'd move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Otterman.
Second?
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And then the next one will be thirty-four twenty twenty-three, right?
Correct.
For the other SID.
Correct. Now that I was straightened out over here on the first one. Thank you, Linda. As previously mentioned, your packet includes the preliminary engineering report for the upcoming twenty twenty-four road maintenance project and the two resolutions creating special improvement districts. Special Improvement District twenty twenty-four oh one dash two addresses a location in the vicinity of Hart River School, as noted at the October seventeenth commission meeting. This includes parts of MJB subdivision, Hart River Third, and Hart River Fourth subdivisions. Engineering staff is recommending the approval of Resolution thirty-four dash twenty twenty-three. Do you have any questions for me regarding this item?
Thank you, Mrs. Marshick. Any questions? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Frederick.
Second?
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. President Decker, I have just a couple more comments regarding these items, if I may. Based on the approval of these resolutions, we will advertise and there will be a thirty-day protest period. That will start November twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-three. In conjunction with this, we plan to hold a public information meeting on Wednesday, December thirteenth, from four-thirty to six, here in the commission chambers at City Hall. And we kindly request one or two commission members to attend the meeting so that the public can interact and discuss with you their thoughts on the project and the special improvement district. So if anyone would like to sign up for that exciting evening, we would love to have you.
Commissioners?
What's the date again?
It is Wednesday, December thirteenth, from four-thirty to six P.M.
I'm unavailable that day. Otherwise, I'd love to be there, but I can't be, so.
Well, and if you just want to reach out and let us know, and if we get more than two of you, we can always advertise. We just wanted to let you know that we would love to have you.
Yeah. Let me know if we, reach out to Rita if you can make it, and then if we need to special advertise or something, and I can, I can possibly fill in. That's thirteenth, right?
Correct. With that, thank you.
All right.
And have a good evening.
You too. Thank you. We need to take a short break. Anyone? Okay, we'll take a ten. Okay, everyone is back. We'll go back into the regular session. And we are done with the road maintenance SID districts, and we'll move into transportation master plan and comprehensive plan updates. This will be presented by Engineering Community Development Director Sculzcheck.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. Before you is a contract, a three-way contract with the North Dakota Department of Transportation and KLJ Engineering. This is for the update to the City of Dickinson transportation master plan and comprehensive plan. Currently, those are two separate documents. In this case, the intent is to bring those in, build some cohesion, and make them a, a single overall document. We do have the grant through the federal highway administration, which is a not to exceed amount of three hundred fifty thousand dollars, and that's a eighty percent federal highway administration, twenty percent City of Dickinson allocation. Therefore, the maximum to be paid by the federal highway administration is two hundred eighty thousand dollars. And then there's a cost breakdown included, as well as a description of the scope of work. And in this case, the total contract not to exceed amount is four hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. The federal cost share is estimated at two hundred sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred six dollars and forty-eight cents. And then the local match is two hundred thirty-one thousand, one hundred forty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. You can also see some of the breakdown of, of the scopes of work that are not, not associated or not participating from the grant that are more comp plan related rather than transportation master planning. So with that being said, city, community development staff recommends approval of this three-way contract with the North Dakota Department of Transportation and KLJ Engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Sculzcheck. Any questions for city staff? Well, that spreadsheet looks like an old microfiche. I'm sure there's every detail's in that thing, so. Hard to look at after a while. You engineers must enjoy that, though.
Reviewing? No, but.
I get how it flows. It just, it's, it's tough to look at for a long time, so. Any other comments or questions? Now I'd look for a motion on this three-way agreement.
I'd move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next up, we have the water, twenty twenty-four water main and lead service line replacement project, pavement and concrete cost breakdown report. Mrs. Sculzcheck?
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. Last commission meeting, November seventh, twenty twenty-three. So there was a request to look at what the cost breakdown is for the associated concrete that's intended to be part of the SID with the project, but then also look at what the added cost for a mill and overlay at the time for those areas of the street that is not associated with anticipated trenching for the water main or the service lines. So included there would be total estimated costs for the concrete to be included in the SID, as well as there'd be some non-participating or, or non-included SID costs typically pedestrian ramps at intersections. Those are non-associated with the SID. So there is, is about eighty thousand dollars estimated as, as concrete-related costs, not included. But total concrete-related costs, seven hundred thirty-one thousand dollars, and those are estimated at the nearest thousands of dollars. And then also then the estimated mill and overlay shows eight thousand nine hundred square yards, and then ultimately what your tonnage would be. And that was estimated at two hundred ninety-two thousand for the additional mill and overlay not associated with the trenched areas. In this case, obviously, I do want to put a slight disclaimer out. This is preliminary data yet. We're only at about thirty percent design review, and so some of the quantities and, and estimated dollars are subject to change. We did include We did include specifically, we did put on approximately about a 20% contingency onto our numbers. We accounted for a one-and-a-half-inch asphalt mill and overlay over those areas. And then we did take some of our pricing based on the State Avenue Mill and Overlay project, but on that one, that was more of a linear-based project rather than a residential street. So you have a little bit more in your intersections and less width and stuff like that. There's slightly more costs associated with those, which is why we put the added contingency on. And so with that being said, I guess any other questions? Happy to answer related to the topic.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Sculzcheck or city staff?
What are your thoughts? It makes sense to find the money and do it while we're there?
Yeah, I'm happy to move forward. And ultimately, again, you know, I think the feedback that I was supplying in the last meeting was just, you know, we're kind of bumping up against some of our estimates. We have, we've been fortunate on some projects to be under engineers' estimates, and then we have had the unfortunate circumstances of being over. And that would, that could put us in a bind a little bit where we'd have to either cut some scope or something like that if we were over, if the bid prices were over our engineers' estimates. But that's certainly something we can look to manage at a later date. But ultimately, you know, on the linear footage of, or the square yards of overall mill and then overlay, I mean, I think the citizens will receive a quality project regardless of the order of operations. And in this case, get in, get the project done, and get out in the construction season of 2024. And they should have a pretty good life to their, to their street that they can utilize and be happy with, so.
There's a lot of concrete work on this.
As I mentioned, in the last meeting presenting that SID, that was something we were a little bit surprised on when we started deep diving. There's a fair bit of the curb and gutter in particular that's almost like the cementitious materials kind of eroded away. And there's a very large diameter aggregate, but that's all exposed aggregate sticking out of that curb and gutter. So there's a fair bit of that. And then there is a reasonable amount of sidewalk as well, so. But a good chunk of it is curb and gutter. If we don't get the curb and gutter right, then the flows won't be right, and then our asphalt won't last the lifecycle that it's expected to last, so.
Agreed. Thanks, Josh.
I think overall, it'll be just a better project to get it all done at once. Thank you for the extra work and thank you, Commissioner Frederick, for bringing this up. We make sure that we look at this for, you know, future projects, so we get this all done at once, so. Any other questions or comments? Look for a motion on this mill and overlay? And the water main lead service line replacement also, so. We have a motion by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And we have an engineering and community development monthly report. Director Sculzcheck?
Again, good evening, Mr. President Commissioners. The engineering and community development monthly report. One side note I want to mention real quick before we jump into it. As HR Director Nominick had mentioned, the project engineer position is posted right now. I believe next Friday it closes, so encourage anybody that's listening to apply if they meet qualifications, so. Jumping ahead to the planning, planning team, so city planner, Gilbert, offered a pretty good monthly update to the Planning and Zoning Commission. There was discussions related to kind of as a department, where we're at and then a little bit where we're going. Some of it's process-related, how we're managing applications as they come in, as well as in how we're delivering work and ultimately allocating work and some of those kind of things. So touched on or kind of emphasized on the pre-application meetings that have been in place now for almost a year and overall flow of that work and tracking of that work. We are also, from a tracking standpoint, we're also in process of implementing software similar to CIP Editor and similar to V, which we use for building permits. So that way, it's a little bit more of a visual-based identification of, as applications come in, kind of what are some of the deadlines and some of those kind of things. So that's a, that's a big step in the right direction as far as where, where we need to be headed, so. Aaron Meyer, our IT director, has been helping develop that and really appreciate that, so. We, there was a discussion and update on the transportation master plan and comprehensive plan as you guys just read over and approved that contract. And then overall, continued research on a number of different things. One thing that was discussed was the fact that homeless shelters were not included anywhere in our city ordinance from a zoning standpoint, and so there was a recommendation to add additional information related to that topic, so. Jumping ahead to building and codes, so if you look at the number of permits that have been paid and picked up, comparing our current year, 2023, to the same time in the previous year, 2022, both in the city and then throughout the county, Stark County, where the building team does building permit reviews and inspections, we're up just slightly in both cases on the number of permits, but then a fair amount on our overall permits paid and picked up. So total dollars in permits that definitely some attributed to a few different key projects that have been larger dollar permit fees, so. But we're up a fair bit, both in the county as well as in the city limits. Going through engineering, those projects in execution, a number of them are complete or very near to complete, maybe working through just a final couple of miscellaneous items and final payments, those kind of things, so. So good to see projects working towards closeout. North Industries Utilities in particular, they're just actually wrapping up for the year. About 40% complete on the water and sewer installation, so good progress on that project being we got a late start on that one. And Sundance Cove, at the time of the bidding, there is a mention that it would likely lag into 2024 before they'd get started. So working through procurement of the light poles. Talking through those in design and preliminary engineering, a number of different projects underway. East Broadway Dam, the contract was just approved for that, to move that from 30% on to make that a bid-ready project. And we're starting to work on a number of different things with the road maintenance project. Unfortunately, that one shows zero. That's not the case. That's matured further than that, and with the SIDs, that was just approved. The West Business Loop and Roundabout Project, October 30th, 2023, we had a public involvement meeting. And that was hosted at the rural fire district, their fire station down on the south side of town. Very good public involvement. There was actually a number of people there, some business owners, and good feedback. And so the feedback related to that will ultimately be incorporated into the designs. We did have, we received the public involvement meeting report back from the consultants and from the DOT. So those pieces of feedback will be, be back, but that was just over two-hour-long meeting, so. Good presentation, good, good involvement, and it was a cold, kind of chilly night that night. So really glad to see people showing up and participating.
I think people are excited for those roundabouts.
Definitely more positive than what I anticipated. I guess we're a little bit concerned, the possible negativity, but that wasn't the case, so. Looking ahead at, at those projects that we're looking at from a preliminary engineering standpoint, so we actually have right now the Fire Station Evaluation and Public Safety Training Center. Both of those projects are under RFP right now. And looking to get proposals back. And then working on, for the Patterson Lake improvements, working on that submittal for the grant.
Did the LiDAR get a chance to fly?
That, actually, they started some of the flights specific to LiDAR over the Patterson Lake area and the Tributary area. And they made a little bit of progress. They had some mechanical issues with the plane. I'm hoping today that they have made some additional progress. So over the weekend, they had limited progress and Monday kind of limited progress as well. So hopefully, we've got some nice weather coming up. Hopefully, they can get that concluded, so. Going down the list then, continue to make progress on Road Maintenance Project. That's not actually at 100%, but probably more 40% or something like that. Not sure why that was there, that error occurred. And then the Sim Street Improvements, that's from basically just north of Museum Drive down to about 9th Street. That project we're working on, about 60% complete on that one. And making good headway on the South Dickinson area study for the property that the city owns that's just outside of city limits. Hopefully, maybe shortly after the new year, we'd have a work session to be able to present some of the findings and information on that. And then pavement management study, we actually just received kind of a preliminary report, putting comments together for that and hopefully get that back to the engineering firm that prepared that just after Thanksgiving. Get that back to them and then look forward to using that data in our planning for the 2025 road maintenance project, so. Then with GIS, so touching on the LiDAR and pictometry. So as I mentioned before, they did get some of the LiDAR done. They're trying to get that done with the different payload, with the flight. It's not, they can't run both payloads at the same time for the imagery and for the LiDAR, so they're starting on the LiDAR. Hopefully, get that all done yet over the next week or so. That would be fantastic. And then ultimately, our, our GIS maps that are available to the public, that's on, available through the new website. That's been all transitioned. Everything is just in a different location. So if anybody has any questions, they can certainly reach out to City Hall if they're looking for that information. And with that, I'd take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Josh. Any questions? All right. Thank you so much. We'll move into, as last thing out, city staff will move into commission. First item up in the commission this evening is we have an executive session pursuant to North Dakota Central Code 44-04-19.1, Paragraph 9, and 44-04-19.2. This is to discuss Mr. Dossinger's contract and contractual, the monetary amounts. So I would look for a motion to move to executive.
So moved.
A motion to move to executive by Commissioner Otterman?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. We will go to. Pursuant to North Dakota Central Code 44-04-19.1, Paragraph 9, and 44-04-19.2, I'd request a motion to end executive session.
So moved.
We have a motion to end executive?
Second.
Second. All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We went in, discussed Mr. Dossinger's contract pursuant to his contract that we signed last year. He was only supposed to get a 2% raise this year upon receiving his scores, which I reported last meeting. Out of a possible average score of all commissioners of a five, he received a 4.55, high above what our contract stated he needed. And upon discussion in there, he will receive the 6% increase, so. I think it's well-deserved. Good job this year. I would say everyone is pretty happy with you, Mr. Dossinger, so.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. I'm very fortunate. I have a very good team to work with here in the City of Dickinson. I'm excited about the future.
Well, like I said, good job, and I'll provide you with all the documentation from the commission's review. So that taking care of commissioners, anything else that the commission would like to discuss this evening?
So we haven't finalized all the things we're going to do, but I did visit with Rita. Leadership Dickinson will be on December 13th. And so we'll have a lunch that day that we'll send an invite out to everybody for. So it just seems like, you know, it's going to be a day of fun.
And where are you going to have it at this year?
We haven't worked out any details yet.
Okay.
So it'll be part of an invite. And we had a good youth commission, switching topics, we had a good youth commission meeting Monday with our students and the officers were elected. And so now they're just going to continue working forth. They brought up some good topics, and they're working on some surveys to go out to the high school students in town to see where people would like them, making an impact in our community. And so we're working on that.
Okay. The one thing I guess that I would like to see with the youth, youth commission, I think there was some discussion before about placing them on certain boards. Vision West has also requested, if they could have a couple of members that would sit on Vision West. I would also like to see them probably on planning and zoning. I know that's a reach to maybe get somebody to get up at 7:00 a.m. to fulfill that. But even on the, sitting on airport, library, any of the boards that we have, you know, if we could have their participation in that so they get exposed to all those different items. Stark Development, just as, you know, sitting there and witnessing how we do that, so.
I've been in discussions with Mr. Dossinger about just giving him some like, like appointments from the youth commission to get calendar invites to those kids and stuff like that. So that'll be here forthcoming, probably in the new year, so.
And the Vision West one, we did, we were going to do that on Monday. They requested it be younger, not like the juniors and seniors, because they would like them to be somebody that could sit on that for more than six months. And so the two members that were freshmen and sophomores weren't at our meeting Monday, so we're going to talk to them about it at our December 4th meeting.
Yeah, the youth commission that's up in Watford City, I'm telling you right now, they did amazing, like, cultural festival up there they put on. And that would be something I would, I would love for our, our kids to meet with those kids up there and find out how they did that. They had like 30 different ethnic groups set up. They had dancing, food, I mean, big displays. I mean, it was, it was quite impressive.
We have one particular youth commissioner that actually expressed some interest in that, that particular topic.
Okay. Yeah, I think they did a really, really great job. And I guess I would like to see them, I put this out there last year about a city flag and a city seal. And I put it out to the patriot group and different groups, and I have got nothing. So if they want to step up to that challenge and, and maybe put together some kind of contest, that would be great, too.
President Decker, may I ask?
Yeah.
I'm looking towards the attorney also, but don't we need a motion for that 6%? Do we need a motion on that?
Was there not one? I thought there was.
Okay. I guess we'll, we'll get a motion then.
I'd move to approve the 6% raise for Mr. Dossinger.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sobeluk to approve the 6% raise for Mr. Dossinger.
Second.
Joint second, so.
Dr. Bear can have it.
Okay, Dr. Bear, all right. Any further discussion? Oh, well, we're spending money, so I gotta go roll call, so I learned that. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. All right, anything else, Commissioners?
Yes, Mr. President.
Commissioner Barrett?
I will not be president during the next commission meeting. I'll be down in Bismarck attending my first board meeting of the League of Cities, so.
Okay.
I'll give a report the next time.
All right. Well, they're putting you to work right away out there. And for those of you that don't know, Dr. Barrett has taken a new position within the city. Not within the city city, the city staff, but in another role in the city. I don't know if you need to make an announcement or want to speak to that?
Absolutely. I'm proud to say I'm the new executive director of the Dickinson United Way.
All right, congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, anything else, Commissioners? If not, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.